Hello again everyone, welcome back to Dragon Quest VII. Let's go ahead and uh...see if we can uh... Talk to the priest. Nope, door is still shut tightly. Can we speak to this kid? No. And that door is shut tightly. Well... Uh...let's see...is this the house where the uh... No? I guess it might be up at the prefect's house then. Alright, let's head up there and find out.
Just a second ago, a person came rushing out of there. Where's Lucas?
I tell you it's true, they really could, they could really do it. They could defeat the beast!
Calm down, and who are these travelers? I hope you made sure to bring them to the village.
Well, actually, no, I um...
You scatterbrain! Huh? Are you the travelers?
I mean, you saw me earlier. Oh, oh there you are! Prefect, these are the travelers I was telling you about, come over here! Alright, we're here. These good folks rescued me from the monsters. You should have seen how strong they were. I'm sure they could win against the beast here too.
If you don't mind, travelers, could you describe everything that has happened?
Nah.
You guys are impressive. You don't look very strong, though. Well now, that's just rude. We must tell the prefect about the battle that took place, including my great heroics, of course!
I wonder if the prefect will praise us?
You're our leader, Ald, so you should be the one to talk to the prefect.
I'm sorry that I went on ahead of you. A lot of people call me a scatterbrain. Ald explained the situation to the prefect.
Hmm, so that's what happened, huh? Now that we know your strength, we'd like to ask a favor of you. There's a monster that's taken up residence in our temple. We'd like you to get rid of it for us. The monster controls this fog and the monsters outside of the, outside this village. If we could just destroy it... Please lend us your strength and help us.
Uh...I'd like to go find out more about this monster first, so uh, no.
Before you say no, please hear what the villagers have to say. Once you know what that monster has done to us, I'm sure you'll change your mind. We're going to gather tonight, together tonight, and have a strategy meeting. Please give me your answer then.
Okay.
It is for the villagers, so I will lend a hand. That monster will not live through this night!
As the prefect said, we need to see what the villagers can tell us. We should learn as much as we can about the monster in the temple before we fight it. So the monster in the temple is bad, right? Then the temple will be stained with his blood! Dang, you guys are bloodthirsty.
Oh, Lucas! Eh, maybe not. Who are you, friends of grandpa?
Yep.
People look awfully angry about the monster in the temple. What happened?
The monster's in the temple, Ald. Let's get him!
Why is there a monster in the temple? Ald, let's investigate.
I, I mean, I, I will, I will. Hold on.
The town's priest was such a wonderful soul. I can hardly believe that he's gone now. He set off with some townsfolk to Mount Tor to deal with the wretched monsters responsible for creating this fog. The priest told us that they had to defeat the monsters, but I imagine that he's resting under God's gentle, great gaze by now.
Monster in the temple? We cannot forgive him! Wearing a priest's robes, blasphemy! We should kill him where he stands! What if he worships God too? Heavens, just where could that daughter of mine have run off to? I don't imagine it's possible, but I just hope she didn't go to the temple. I mean, I haven't really heard anything about what this monster has done, you know? Has he visibly eaten people in front of the villagers?
I heard about you, please defeat the monster in the temple. If you don't, the villagers will be killed.
You're the ones that saved that boy, right? Are you going to fight the monster in the temple for us?
I mean, maybe. Maybe not, though.
Now we strike! We won't be fooled by a damn monster in a priest's robes! My son was one of the village's strongest. That is why he went to fight the monsters. I'll never forgive them for his death. You'll avenge him, won't you? A priest, this man's son, and the lumberjack and his wife have all sacrificed themselves for the village. The white fog covering the village and the monsters have both come from Mount Tor. That monster in the temple must be the cause of our troubles. Good travelers, please lend us your help! We cannot ignore this. Master Ald, we must go defeat the monster in the temple immediately!
Four people went to Mount Tor to fight the monsters. Only that monster in our temple returned. Killed everyone. He's keeping quiet now, but surely he'll go on a rampage soon enough.
The house next to the pond is the lumberjack's place. The lumberjack and his wife went to fight the monsters in Mount Tor and never returned. Now only the little, the little Lucas lives there. I feel terribly for him. Lucas? Maybe he's in the cemetery. He goes there to pray every day.
Aw, you're not fair. Lucas gets to play outside. Lucas is all alone. He has to do everything himself. He's not like you at all. If Lucas's parents were alive, they wouldn't let him outside either. Lucas is so unfortunate and he's no older than my daughter. It's all because of the monster in the temple. It makes me so mad.
I'm sorry, it's not serious, is it? We can't lay in supplies with this fog, nor do we have any weapons that could take that fiend out. I mean, you have like, flame boomerangs. Warhammers. It's pretty good stuff. Tempt swords, but to be fair, only Ira can use it, and I'm not sure exactly why you're selling it, why you even have it. Thank you so much for saving my little brother, hm? The prefect said that, I guess it's finally time. That darn monster in the temple, we'd make mincemeat out of him if you'd just help out.
Kind guests, please defeat the monster in the temple. If you do, I'll cook a great feast for you.
Ooh, I like feasts. We've hardly had any customers these past few days. If only that thing were gone. If only the fog and that monster were gone, I'm sure all our, all of our customers would come back. Where do you live, sir? If he's the only thing keeping the sun from shining, I'd fight him too. That damn monster in the temple, just wait, feel the fury, fury of my hoe! Is it a hoe of destruction? Uh, no, it's just a normal hoe. Aw...
My brother said that he was going to attack the monsters on the mountain. He never came back. The priest, lumberjack, and his wife who went with him were killed by the monsters too. Lucas is the only living member of the lumberjack's family left. It's sad, and it's the fault of those monsters. You people are strong, please avenge my brother and the others. My son blamed this terrible fog on the monsters. He said it had to be their fault, so he went to fight the monsters on Mount Tor, and we never heard from him again. The only thing that came back was that awful monster in the temple. I bet that monster wasn't satisfied with just eating my son and the others who went with him, and now wants to devour the entire village.
I mean, have you asked him? I mean, why would the monster come here in the first place? And not do anything? Here sits a golden statue that resembles a goddess. That is a very familiar statue.
Father, mother, please rest in peace. I swear to avenge you. I'm not scared of you beast! Someday I will avenge my parents! Just try to eat me like you ate my parents! Damn it!
And he runs right through us. Well, the priest didn't, I mean, well, the monster didn't say anything. I wonder if he can uh... Not speak at all. Alright, we were able to get in. Ha ha! I can check your pots! Watch, you found the mystic nut. Ald obtained the mystic nut. Perfect. Let's check your bookshelf. Ald checked the bookshelf. The bookcase contains theological texts, all neatly aligned. Hello? The monster who wears a priest's clothes looks at you sadly. Uh, it doesn't appear to be able to speak. They were monsters, but they didn't stink at all. Strange.
This is very strange. They are supposed to be monsters, but I sense no evil in them.
Them?
Master Ald, it would be wise to listen to that child's tale.
He did not interfere with us either. What is going on? He only looks like a monster to me. Something is going to happen. I can just feel it.
That door is tightly shut. I wonder if the real priest got transformed?
Was he truly a monster? He never did anything bad. No, what am I thinking? Oh goddess, please protect us all from disaster. And who are you? Oh, that's right, we passed by one another at the graveyard. My name is Lucas. My mother and father are buried there. I live alone. Don't worry about me, though. This statue has been handed down through my mother's family, and it will protect us all. What if he turns out not to be a bad guy after all? Oh, never mind. Yeah, I mean, I'm embarrassed to say it, but this statue reminds me of my mother. Before she went to fight the monsters, mom said that this statue would protect me in her place. The monster in the temple won't be able to harm me, but what if? No, it's nothing.
The statue was the embodiment of his mother's prayers. Could Lucas know about the monster?
For Lucas to say, "Let's beat that monster." I'm not sure why, but I don't think that monster is really bad. Well then, maybe we shouldn't beat it.
People look awfully angry about the monster in the temple. What happened?
Hmm... I feel like someone wants to tell us something, but uh, can't. Hey, can we get some like chalk and a blackboard or something?
So the goddess statue is taking the place of a mother. How sad.
The monster's in the temple, Ald. Let's get him!
Why is there a monster in the temple? Ald, let's investigate.
Alright, now it's just looping.
The best thing to do is get it while it's sleeping, yes. I want to do some thinking alone. Please go ahead and talk to the villagers.
I mean, I have.
The monster in the temple always scares me. He always controls himself, never acting violently. I bet he's plotting something evil over there.
So the real priest died. Ald, let's get revenge! Maybe I didn't actually read that. I thought it was uh... Something he'd already said. Uh, do I need to stay at the inn? Is there anyone that I haven't spoken to? I'm pretty sure I've spoken to everyone now. Doesn't say I need to stay at the inn, so I feel like I have not triggered something. I talked to all you guys. There's no one in there that I missed. Well, okay, I didn't, oh, there we go.
Ah, Ald, we were just about to start the meeting. Please, this way.
I don't know why it didn't trigger before, but uh, okay.
Why do men always try to make decisions all by themselves? My mother and I have a right to join the meeting. I won't go home. My husband is being so insensitive. This is about the murderer of my son too. Yet you're telling us women to stay home? I won't go home.
I'm in trouble. I said that the meeting would only, would be only for men. The prefect will be angry with me. Perhaps it is time for a strategy session. The entire village is planning to battle the monster in the temple.
I guess it hasn't started yet.
Damn, there are an awful lot of them. One, two, three... There's only four, Gabo. Alright, let's talk to the prefect. See if that triggers it.
Don't be shy, come right to the, into the center. I just said for the villagers, please wait a while longer. I told you only men would be allowed at this meeting. Well, I told them, but my wife and daughter wouldn't listen.
I will stay right here. That's right, if little Lucas is allowed to go, we should be able to go too. I want to avenge my brother.
Um, that's why they're here.
Well, never mind. Ah, you're back!
I mean, like, honestly, why not? Why, why keep the women out, right?
How did it go? What is it doing? My brother and the shopkeeper are watching it. There hasn't been any change so far. Huh, where's Lucas? There is no one here.
I'm sorry to be late.
Well, anyway, let's get started.
Yes, yes, I'm coming. Oh, maybe that's that guy.
Everybody, these are the travelers I was telling you about. The monster has been living in the temple for some time now. I'm sure everyone is anxious to do something about it. How can we get rid of our, the monster when even our strongest people failed? Both Lucas's parents and that woman's son couldn't do it. Even our priest was lost. All of the people who might have been able to do it all have already been killed. There was nothing we could do. But now, now these travelers are here, here seem to be as strong as, no stronger than, the monsters.
They saved me when I was about to get attacked by monsters.
If the villagers and travelers combine their might, then we might have a chance. Before that monster in the temple has a chance to do anything else, let's kill it and avenge the deaths it caused. If the travelers will agree to help us, victory will be ours. Now let's discuss when and how, when and how we're going to kill the monster in the temple.
I wonder what possible reason Lucas could have, could have for being late. Shall we go and see?
It appears we are quite heavily depended upon.
Everybody's up for it, but that Lucas kid hasn't said a word. Has he gotten upset stomach or something? Ald, shouldn't we go and see what's wrong? Excuse me, I have something to tell you. I can't tell you here, though. Would you mind stepping into the storage room with me? Sure.
I hope there is something that I can do. There's no way that I'll ever forgive that, forgive my brother's killer. Let's take action immediately. I'm counting on you. We can't allow that freak to live another day.
I can't wait to get my hands on that freak. I'll hit him in the head with my hoe! I understand how my wife and daughter feel, but I just can't let them get hurt. This is a man's job. My son would agree with, agree with me too. It's finally going to happen, everyone. We're counting on you. We need to strike while at least expect it, expects it. We need to get the monster before it has a chance to call for help. Suppose the first thing is to come up with a plan to lure him out of the temple. The villagers are going to kill that monster, aren't they? I want to avenge my parents too, but is it really alright to just kill him? I just can't see the monster as really being evil. I know he might have been the one that, who killed my parents, but he may also be innocent. Sometimes I think he's not really a monster. Aw, I'm sorry, I got a little carried away. Please forget what I just said.
So the monster in the temple didn't actually do anything to the villagers. Things are getting complicated.
Well, I mean, that's just a possibility. Maybe that monster is a good fellow. Ald, what do you think?
If we are to believe what Master Lucas tells us, the monster in the temple is not actually a monster, but the villagers are convinced the monster is the source of all their troubles. Master Ald, who are we to believe?
Uh, well, you believe me. Always.
Now then, let me hear opinions on the subject.
I'm ready to go right now. Everybody else feels the same way. We're all ready.
Yes, just exactly what I wanted to hear. The monster could go crazy at any time. We need to do something. The sooner the better. Let's surround the temple while he sleeps and set a fire to smoke him out.
That's out of the question. What are we going to do if the fire spreads to other houses? We don't have to set the, an act, we don't have to set an actual fire. All we have to do is yell "fire!"
Hmm, any other opinions?
How about late at night? I don't see any problems with that.
It has been decided. Tonight, you men will surround the temple. Then you'll yell "fired" in order to flush the monster out. When it flees the temple, it will suddenly realize that there is no fire. While the monster breathes a sigh of relief, we will beat it beyond recognition. Finally free from its tyranny, we can return to our sheltered lives. Let the other villagers know of this decision. The monster will meet its end tonight at the temple.
Uh-oh.
With your help, we may be able to rid ourselves of that monster. You will help us, won't you?
No.
Now is not the time to joke around. Don't worry, you'll have us to help you. There's no reason to be afraid. Well, I'm sure you have to get ready. You're free to do as you like until nightfall. If you'd like to rest, you may use the room upstairs. As soon as you're ready, let me know. I'll lead you to the temple. I'll see you then. If we are to believe what Master Lucas tells us, the monster in the temple is not actually a monster. But the villagers are convinced the monster is the source of all their troubles. Master Ald, who are we to believe?
Like I said, me. Let's just go ahead and uh, get some rest. Do I talk to you?
Heavens, just where could that daughter of mine have run off to? I strictly told her not to go outside.
How'd the meeting go? What? It's going to be tonight? So they're finally going to do it. If my dad is going, "I'll stay home and protect our home." If you care to take a rest, please use the bed in this room. Do you want to rest? Sure. Alrighty.
Are you ready then, Ald? Nope. Let me know when you are then.
Okay, so it is a uh, we have to tell him that we're, when we're ready, huh?
I thought Lucas got here, but I guess he's gone off somewhere again. I wonder if he forgot his promise to play with me?
All clear. If something happens, I'll give a signal, and then I run to tell the prefect. I'll assist you in fighting that fiend. We just want to take the point, we just want you to take the point, you see? What shall we do for tonight? What Lucas was saying might, might have been really important. I wonder what Lucas was trying to say. Ald, is it really okay to hurt that monster? I can hardly wait for tonight. Finally, we'll vanquish that cursed villain and bring back the light of day to our village. At long last, we can finish off that monster.
I felt a chill run up my spine. Maybe it's that temple monster. Can't the menfolk take care of him soon?
You're all set for tonight, I see. I'll finally have revenge for my mother and father. Does that monster really deserve to die? Oh, I'm sorry, it's nothing really.
Well... I guess we tell him that we're ready.
Now the time has come. We'll finally be saved. To the temple, let's kill that hateful monster!
No.
What, are you refusing to go kill the monster?
Uh, yep.
I don't understand your answer. I'll ask you one more time. Will you go to the temple to help kill the monster?
Nope.
What, are you taking sides with our enemy? That monster stole the life of our priest and three of our villagers. We've come this far and we will bring things to an end. I won't let anything stop us from total victory. Someone, anyone, come quickly!
What is it, father? What is it, dad? Prefect, it's time to go. Let's get rid of the monster. What? Is anything wrong?
Seize the travelers! Lock them in the shed until we, we've killed the monster!
Prefect, what happened?
Never mind, just do it!
Yes, sir! Ow, ow, oh! What, are you saying that the travelers have sided with the monster?
You suddenly started stay, saying they wouldn't help kill that monster. I hope they haven't found out about our plan. Things have become quite complicated to follow.
If that is true, we must hurry. We must fight the monster on our own.
I agree. We'll leave them until we kill the monster. Okay, it's locked. Let's go now.
Ow.
We got caught, didn't we? Nobody seems to be injured, but how can we get out of here, Ald?
Where are we? Let's get out of here.
This must be somewhere in the village. We must go outside at once.
First of all, we have to go outside. I'm worried about Lucas.
The door is locked. It seems the keys you have can't open it. However, you hear a girl's voice faintly from the other side.
Heh, you got scolded by my grandpa. You can't leave here until you're really sorry. Are you feeling sorry? Can you promise to behave yourself from now on?
Y-yes.
Good, I'll let you out, but this isn't something I normally do, okay?
Aw, thank you. Get her!
Thank god I finally found you. If we don't hurry, he'll be killed. Oh, Lucas, I found you, let's play. We have no time, I'll, I'll play with you later, okay? Please, kind people, come with me to stop them. They mustn't kill him somehow, I know they shouldn't. Please, come with me to the temple. I was right, you were bad kids, stealing my Lucas away as soon as he returned. I should have hid him from you.
I'm on Lucas's side, Ald. What about you?
My instincts tell me it would be best to do as Master Lucas says. Master Ald, you must follow Lucas, Master Lucas.
What do we do, Ald? We've got to decide now.
Thank you, let's hurry to the temple. Lucas joined the party. Please hurry to the temple. The priest will be killed by the villagers. Alright, we're off to the temple. Here we go. We must hurry to the temple before something terrible happens.
The men of the village have headed out to the temple to defend the village from the terrible monster. Soon they'll kill that nasty monster. I'm waiting here so I can hear the news right away. Oh, it's Lucas and the travelers. What are you doing here? My dad told me not to dare fight the monster with him, so I'm praying here. For the sake of my big brother, I pray that the monster will be reduced to bones.
These people are bloodthirsty.
Please stop them, he'll die!
Damned beast, your time has come! What the hell? He doesn't even fight back. The coward, kill him! Cursed beast, return the dead to us! What are you trying to do, bringing that fog down upon us? Give me my son back! Ah, I'm not scared of you anymore. We'll get you all of us together.
First you blight it to this village in eternal fog, and then you took the lives of our people. These acts are unforgivable. Prepare to die!
What are you trying to pull? You think we'll ever believe you didn't do it? I'm not scared of you anymore. We'll, we'll get you all of us together.
Oh my, we must hurry and stop them.
They're ganging up on him, Ald, hurry! We've got to help him.
This is terrible. If we don't hurry and help- This is terrible. If we don't hurry and help him, he'll be killed.
Travelers, how did you escape? Oh, I see. Lucas, you guided them here, did you? How can you defend that vile beast who slew your parents?
Listen, prefect, that monster is...
Shut up! You've been tricked by that hideous beast! So you insist upon defending the monster and getting in our way, do you? In that case... Everyone, these people are accomplices of the monster. Capture them!
Again? I was deceived. I never would have guessed that these people were in league with the monsters. Someone lock them away on Mount Tor. Make sure that they can never leave. It will be done. Lucas too? Womp. I never would have guessed that the travelers were in league with the monsters. I was completely deceived. Lock the door, quick! If the monsters come out, we're dead! Alright, already. I heard you. I heard you. Even Lucas, wow. There, I locked it, see? Does that make you feel better? Oh, just remember, the prefect has issued orders to stand guard here, just in case. No way! Ow, are you alright? Something terrible has happened, and it's my fault. Let's hurry back to the village. The doors are tightly shut. What do we do? If we can't get out of here, then... I know, let's search for a way out on the edge of the forest. I've heard that monsters live there, but we have no choice. Besides, I'll have nothing to worry about if I'm with you. We have to find a way back to the village. Let's go! And we will have to do that next time. See you then, everyone.